Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for coming. I'm Mina Lutrell. I'm the chair of the planning board. And first order of business is to call the planning board meeting session. I'd like to introduce you to the planning board members. This is Debbie Di Maria and Lisa Brascio. And also introduce you to the business administrator for the planning board is Colleen. And Colleen is going to go through a brief overview of what MBTA Communities is, and then take you through the mapping and what's expected. So, thank you very much. Thank you for coming.
Good evening, everybody. Again, I'm Colleen Stansfield. I'm the business administrator for the planning board. This is MBTA Communities. This is a presentation that we've given at the last two informational sessions. So, we thought that we would go over it just in case somebody didn't get a chance to go to one of those. And it's just be a quick run through. If you have questions at all, please just stop me. But we'll go ahead and start. So, Southborough is a commuter rail community. I think everybody's heard that. So, I'm going to start here with the impact of restrictive zoning. Restrictive zoning is single-family zoning, an acre or above. It's the most restrictive. It's you can only do the one thing on the zoning, the land. So, high home prices are one thing that comes from that. Restrictive zoning creates barriers to addressing our housing shortage. And when there's only so much housing around, prices will naturally skyrocket. According to Redfin, median price for a single-family home in Southborough is now 1.37 million. That's a lot. Only one in 12 residents in the Boston metro area has the annual income needed to buy a typical home. And that's not a typical home in Southborough. Racial wealth gap. Seventy percent of white households in great Boston own their own home compared to 37% of black households, and only 31% of Hispanic households. This is the MBTA zoning is considered part of Chapter 40A, which is our zoning regulations. And this is Section 3A, which is new. Growing a healthy and substantial, sustainable regional economy requires providing housing options at a variety of scales and a wide range of price points. Decades of underproducing housing across every municipality is creating a serious cost change. High home prices are pushing out college graduates, young families, older adults, and even people with moderate incomes. These poses a serious threat to our economy as families, working families are squeezed out and many residents are leaving the state. We leave our most important housing policy decisions to local governments, but these local governments are not elected to think regionally. Local resistance has prevented thousands of new homes. State leadership has stepped in to course correct MBTA multifamily zoning requirements, Section 3A, passed by the state legislature in 2021. And it was signed by Governor Charlie Baker, so it's been a little bit. What does Section 3A do? It requires communities to designate a zoning district in which multifamily housing near transit, MBTA transit, is allowable as of right. So, that means no special permits, no variances. We just allow it by right. It impacts 177 communities that have commuter rails. And then you look into the city and there's the MBTA and the buses and all of that, all of that counts. Rapid transit, just for the... District must allow 15 units, an acre, by right. Zone must be of reasonable size. No age restrictions. Must be suitable for families. And a certain percent must be within the half-mile of the transit station if applicable, which it is here. Everybody has a map on their table that shows the half-mile area around the transit station. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. We are also being recorded tonight by Sam, so thank you. It won't be live tonight, but we will be able to see it on the YouTube channel. So, this is a... There's also one of these on your table. It talks about the missing middle housing. So, we go from single-family homes, which is the most restrictive zoning, all the way to the big apartment buildings. And there's a whole lot of things that are in between. And you'll see this a little bit later in the presentation. We have duplexes and cottages, townhomes. Multifamily can take many, many different forms. So, what are the benefits of multifamily housing? We have more housing options, more access, and greater affordability. Older adults can downsize. College kids can come home and rent their first apartment. Young couples can become homeowners. Low-income families can find housing stability. Middle-income families have greater mobility. Small businesses can retain employees. Grandparents can stay close to their grandchildren, and we all benefit. Why is this good for Southborough? Southborough has already committed to improving our housing diversity and supporting broader housing goals through the 2019 Housing Production Plan and the 2021 Master Plan. There were other townhomes, too, that talk about this. Many people may want to live in Southborough, but housing prices are extremely high and many of our homes are single-family only, which means seniors wanting to downsize and stay in town have no opportunity to do so. Young couples looking to start a family can't afford homes in town. College graduates cannot return to their hometown without having to move back in with their parents. Local businesses struggle to find quality employees. And we all lose out on the new neighbors that the diversity of housing options would bring to our community. What are the requirements for Southborough? We are a commuter rail community. The deadline for our conformance is December 31, 2024. Current housing units in town are 3,763. And the requirements in Southborough are 50 acres, of which need to be a certain way. The developable station area has 167 acres. The percent of the district that needs to be located in that area is only 20%, so that's 10 acres. Originally, this was going to be 50 acres right by the station. That changed when people started clamoring. Our district capacity at 15 units an acre, at 50 acres, will be 750 units. What does zoning capacity mean? This has been something that we've had people have a hard time wrapping their head around. So, capacity equals what would directly be built under the new zoning code if there was nothing currently on the ground. So, this has nothing to do with production. It all has to do with zoning. So, if you have a building on there, I can't read the... Existing two units, the capacity is four. Existing no units, the capacity is still four. And then you have existing units, four, the capacity is still four. Existing density, a half-mile radius from the station. Total residential units down there are 318. The neighborhood area is 265.79 acres. And I think that's a little bit of a guesstimate. We've had several different acreages for this area, but around 265, we'll say. Neighborhood density in that area is also 1.2 units per acre. 10 acres of this district is required to be within the shaped area. Remaining 40 acres can be located anywhere else in town. Other considerations. Land that cannot be included. We have on the big, big maps there that you have on your tables, the excluded land, which is federal, state, municipally-owned land. Certain designated lands like wetlands, flood zones, parks, playgrounds, and conservation land are all excluded. And they're all gray on the maps, so those are well-defined for you. There is no project being proposed with this. This is a mandate for zoning for all 177 MBTA communities and designated adjacent communities. We cannot require more than 10% affordable units. We could do up to 20%. And that would need to be approved by the state. And it would need a feasibility study for them to review to make sure that it would still be economically feasible. So, this is in Southborough. We did a little looking around and we found that you do have multifamily. And this one is 12 East Main Street. It has nine residential units on a 0.75-acre lot. And the density is 12 units per acre. 8 Newton Street is three units on a 0.15-acre lot. And that's a 19, almost 20, units per acre. These are the kind of things we think we can get in around town. The 3 Pleasant Street, this is a three-family, and it's on a quarter acre. That density is 11.87. 36 Main Street, multiple houses, multiple units on a single lot. Three units on a 0.23-acre lot is 13.26 units in density. One Prentice Street is a two-family on a 0.19-acre lot, and that's a 10-unit density. 16 Cherry Street, student housing. Two residential units on a 0.15-acre lot equals 13, almost 14, units per acre as a density. And 61 Turnpike is a mixed use, residential with commercial. There are five residential units and then a store, used to be a rug store. And that density equals out to 11.61. So, this was the timeline we started, when we first started this. So, bear with me, we're done with some of it. So, we had our informational sessions in October. November, we decided to go ahead and start with the mapping sessions. And we'll initiate public hearings after the planning board sort of goes through and analyzes all the input we get from the town. And those should start probably in January. We're hoping to bring a bylaw to Springtown meeting in March. And I think that's it for now. So, that's there. So, I want to explain to you what's on your table and what we're looking to do. So, the big map is the one we would like you to use, the gray areas. I have tabs up here that I painstakingly put out to equal little 5-acre lots. And we're going to ask you to put them on the map in places where you think that this type of zoning would be appropriate. It can be anywhere. It doesn't matter what's on the ground. It's not an exercise in what's going to be built. It's creating an opportunity, a by-right opportunity, to get more multifamily housing near transit stations. So, I should probably... So, there's directions, too. If we can look at the directions, the workshop directions. So, we're hoping you guys will all work as a table. So, probably the easiest thing to look at would be the backside. These are the things we want you to put on to the map. We have, I would give you 10 tabs per table. That equals the 50 acres. We need five tabs, so 25 acres to be contiguous. They all have to touch. It doesn't have to be a circle. It doesn't have to be a square. It doesn't have... It could be a line. You could have jogs going either way, but they do have to touch each other. And then we have two tabs, which will be the 10 acres, that need to be within that half-mile radius around the T station. And then you have three tabs left that you could put anywhere. You could put them with others if you think those areas are good, or you can do, put them anywhere. The minimum district has to be 5 acres, so that's why we're giving you the 5-acre tabs. Does that make sense for everybody? Go ahead.
So, I have questions. What you're asking us is that we... What you're asking... Sorry. So, what you're asking is that we nominate the area, even though this may not be our house?
Oh, yeah.
And this is going to be used as input?
Yes.
All right. And who's deciding this input?
So, this is a planning board. It's a zoning effort, which is always done through the planning board. Even if it was a citizen's petition, it would still have to go through public hearings at the planning board. So, the considerations, there is a list on your tables that may or may not fit this town. Usually that's, you know, we're bus routes and things like that that are close to. But yes, so we will have public hearings starting in January. But in the meantime, we just don't have any idea where people think this would be appropriate. So, that's what we're asking for people. And it doesn't, like, again, it doesn't matter what's on there. It's a zoning effort. And it's hidden district. What the plan is, is to do an overlay district for all of these, which means the underlying zoning in your homes are. Nothing changes. So, you still have a... A pre-existing, but a conforming house, or lot, I should say.
Yeah, I understand that, you know. If we pick my house, I know it's not going to become multifamily today. It's not going to become... It's going to be a zone that's multifamily. And then a developer could buy a house from me and make that housing.
How big is your lot?
How big?
So, you could do seven, that's what I have an acre. Yeah. But we also won't be zoning one single lot. It has to be...
Be a neighborhood.
Yeah. Yeah, you could do that. I mean, it really, it doesn't matter about...
It's not we could. It has to be. We have to take 5 acres as a minimum and zone this out. There's no question, there's no way we can sit there and say no. Why does Southborough have to be compliant with this?
Because we're part of the MBTA group that has a train station. And that's what they've chosen, considering that it's mass transit and people could live closer to that and have access to. It's definitely going to be more urban. But again, that's the first...
I'm wondering if the town can pause this and push back on the state?
So, that's...
Because this wasn't some... This plan wasn't decided by a elect vote. This plan was decided by the MBTA's group. Close-door conversation, we're going to do this. Now, I know it was, because the law was created with the law's definition, as you defined it here today, of a half acre, 5 acres. That wasn't put into a vote. This was all decided on a close-door situation and put on to us. Now, what happens if we are not complying with this?
So, this is a mapping session? We've had information sessions. We're not debating the statute tonight. We're going to do the mapping tonight. The MBTA community sits on every single planning board agenda, so you're welcome to come to any planning board meeting.
Do we have email or something on planning boards we can get on? Is it scheduled?
Yes.
Because I asked you to put my name on that email last time I was up for my session. I never actually got an email. And I didn't actually get notification for today's meeting either. It's coming to the houses, not all the houses.
I will, I'll try and get that fixed. I apologize for that.
That is concerned, it's not... We're deciding a lot for a lot of people's homes here. And this is not the town. I mean, this is not 169 acres worth of property, at least half-mile, let alone the other 50 or so.
Well, again, we're not really debating that. It's more of a mapping session.
I know, but we are affecting a lot of people's property. We are affecting a lot of people's homes. So, a lot of towns should be involved, which is... Communication needs to be very clear. It's very important to the entire town.
Well, that's why we're doing this. We started looking at this, you know, probably back in January. And it didn't make any sense to start looking at properties to zone without getting neighborhood input. So, this is why we're here. And we are taking it all very seriously. Yeah, so... Yeah, so originally, the 5 acres were supposed to be in the circle. And towns got back to them. And, you know, those adjacent towns that also have to do this. And they don't have to have so too. So, it was quite burdensome, especially since in Southborough, that eight-and-a-half-mile area is really a form of sectioned town. You know? Yeah, they made several changes just back in August.
Do you know what the developers are looking at when they look at a piece of property? What exactly are they looking at?
So, I'm not sure because I'm not a developer. But I can tell you that this is a mapping session. This has nothing to do with buildings. And the view that I ask is, you know, if you put 5 acres on multiple lots, then that can't be developed until all of your slots are... And again, we're not looking to develop. We're just looking to zone. There's nothing, we get no benefit from building, not right now. I don't know if that'll change. Well, put it this way. So, if anybody is concerned about a neighborhood, I mean, I would expect that, you know, anybody with a lot in the half-mile radius would want big money for their house. And the land cost will keep them from making an economical choice. Well, and the other path is they don't get to bypass the waters, you know, the EPA Water Act or something. If it doesn't hurt, you don't get to build there. It doesn't matter if it's a zone or not. Okay? I'm going to start handing out stickers in a minute. What's up?
You provided this nice list of two and one. Do we know how many acres total there is already multifamily?
10%.
So, those are just, for example, of what's already in town because there is no actual multifamily zoning in Southborough right now. So, those are all pre-existing, conforming. And they were not built by...
My question is, this is stupid, but why can't we build some housing on the parking lot of the train station?
You can zone it, but just remember, it doesn't matter what's on the ground right now. You can zone anything. This isn't creating...
I just think that parking lot's of a problem.
Oh, on that side?
That's what they consider, you know?
I've never seen it before.
The middle housing.
Pretty big.
So, I'm going to give directions. No, no, we didn't want to do that and sort of die because then we don't feel like we're really getting a chance. I mean, I can do it over the microphone. Okay, so I'm looking at now... Doesn't mean you don't want to.
I don't know town.
If the county goes, they give it 5 acres. 5 acres a lot. 5, 5, 5.
Make a deal, they'll be bought from the homeowners.
Homeowners.
All we're doing is zoning it to a lot.
Yes. They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this. I think that need to raise the loss of jealousy. Okay, so I'm gonna... Is it great out? They missed out on this.
People don't.
Wait, they don't care about the money?
Well, no.
They all love it. They research because they're real.
Yeah. What they have been on, it's not right next to. I can't put you. You have to have five, you have to have five of them together, 25. 25.
All behind the train.
I, I can't, I can't. But here's.
Yeah, I thought you wanted that now.
If that, if that actually ended off the train, it doesn't help. The one thing is the road outside, it's already there, so.
You didn't get one, five of them there?
Uh, no, just get that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's almost one of them. And that tree is right there. Okay, I.
That's just a.
It's just.
Come on, you don't.
Have you heard? Don't.
GTM ready, I'd be coming out.
We're asking.
That's your site, right? So it doesn't take its own. Push it, push it, you might have to.
But some would, some would.
Other four. I have.
I know, because.
I just put the fur on, on apple. I, I like, I bet, I bet no problem because I know. The zoning guy out there. He, he, yeah, right? I mean, if that, if.
Well, yeah.
Right. I, I'm like, right at the, or here it's now.
White area.
No, I, I walk.
Those are all available results. As unrestricted as this goes. White area, that's schools, so. This one. This one is. This place. No, this is, um. EKW with the transfer station. And I'm not 100% sure about that. In consecutive means they have to be. Very. Oh, that's right. L line. So, so.
Hey, Aldo, how are you? I haven't seen you in a while. Been around. Bet.
I'm trying to ask her, she's, she's here, she said, consecutive means.
I, I know, I, I am at the.
Oh, dude. No, 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 I.
No, just three of them.
I, I, I chop it. No. Three of them. I don't.
I thought they were more, I thought they were more than that, because they started out right on Oakwood.
But they're not really. Yeah, London. It's not. They make too much money to get London to buy that. So it's just not.
After. We want half the Sullivan side. I'm a five and one side.
I think it's for my garage, it's probably on the inside and my house is on the other.
No, the house, the garage is outside.
Oh, okay, here's Mary. So we're here, here. It's a great. Yep, 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 yep. Yep, it's right here. And the other. I can find the meaning of. Move along. Oh, don't. What is right, right entry is.
I love to do, I would say that.
I don't like that.
Some of the stuff. What, what's going to happen to the, um. West person. If someone did that.
They could give you what they want, you know, you back and you say.
Yeah. And we're getting some. You don't want it. Nobody can text you. Very.
But when it will be like 45.
All that building. That, that, where that, where that.
Hello. No, that's for the. We've got a 188.
I think, I would know.
I think your house is.
Yes, you're right. I, I, you thought you were. I can't. Yeah, why not? No, no, no. I said five.
The kids, uh, did you, did you come down a lot of on the hill before the traffic light? Kids coming to the other side of the.
Oh, it used to be. Yeah.
Only, only one.
What does it matter?
I say put it with the. Yeah, the squeeze over there. No, I mean, the one, the. Oh, that one. I don't know, is that a.
Oh, it is. No, these people bought it out. At some, some movie. They're gonna leave it.
Leaving it, sir?
Was that something? It's an old, but right now it's still.
Recreation. And there you have to get to, you have to know the back entrance, you have to walk up those dangerous stairs. I didn't know there was a back entrance.
Ah. I went to school there, so.
Really?
I went to school at every school in South Park until they built, built. The, the two. Cause I lived in. I did. I lived, because I lived in Fable, and they kept changing their district. I moved up to another school. And I went to, um, Peter's Annex, which was the old police station. How was this?
That was a school.
Yep. It was my first. Third, fourth, and fifth.
It must have been a different building.
No, same building.
It was like.
Yeah.
They, they are conditioning. This is nine East Brooklyn Road, nine plus twelve, and I can't picture that at all. I used to live at nine seven, and I can't find that on the air. It's a three, three apartment building.
My mom's house is a two, um, two apartment building. Same two streets back.
We use the bus.
I just like the. Are we pulling a pic?
You guys have to break your. What about you? What you want on another dead house? I thought you had to cut it down.
How calm. Say what?
I'm telling you.
Action work is to get from there, out there.
I'll tell you what's interesting. Looking around at other tables, there's several other tables that have.
It's gonna be really strange.
Well, what?
All of it.
Um, there, um, so, um, this was purchased by the, uh, South, South Road. If they see the, if they were trying to stop people developing, they would possibly, uh, better. And other people out, out, and, and, and you have like. And you're already, you're, you're forced to do that, you can look it out in the news. Like I said, that's why I don't want it.
That's scary. Just that cycle, I'm a change. Well, that'll happen fast. You, you go home and.
That's, um. Eighty five. Uh, so, yeah. Yeah, the one thing I, the one thing what you know about it is that the sidewalk got, uh, very blocked. And those.
That makes you cherry.
I guess, I think they're probably not really allowed, but I don't.
But it's my, it's my sign. There's a reason, actually, you could ask her, uh, why. So why are we selecting? What's that losing?
Oh, wait a minute. Then you look time for the individuals. Five individuals.
Have fun. Have fun.
Can we say, because?
You don't have to put your name on it anyway, right?
How are you? Workability. They move with you.
That's, that's the town. Two houses here. Already. You can live there. Yep. And I knew him. I was sad, you know?
I'll stop when I come back, maybe use restroom.
It's not gonna let us move. Away from you too. Uh.
That formation.
Oh, yeah. That's Tomlin. Time for a hundred years building. But the, um, the anchor here is, um, um, at Palm, Palm Springs. Yeah, um, and that one there, I mean, I know it's shat together.
I, I would ask you. Um, sorry again. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, we give our, we come from a horse.
Well, we have to down there. Cause it seems to be there, yeah. We have to have something.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm just so sorry.
Not our choice. We walked down. And if you were to, uh, call it both, um, you and, uh, my three rail. Nine, one big, um, nine, or they just go down there. Again, that's a three grand. In the yard, she could work on it.
Wants to practice. Sales, sales. Well, sales.
They would took, yeah. The red sole.
Anyway, she started there when she got her.
For days, for days, thank you. I worry about her. You, you, yeah.
Stirring their own. Distributors. Well, we, we, well, we. It's like the start to stay at a hotel and self serve. Oh, really? Why do where that is? You know, craft, craft.
We're talking, we're gonna be high, so we're gonna be. We're gonna be high. Great.
We're show glass. And I just want the principal library. The whole room full of stuff, right?
Whistling.
Rooms. Oh, rooms, oh, sorry.
Great, love to. Everybody can get your attention for one second. Um, at this point, um, hopefully everybody's, going, starting to fill out the reasoning sheet. I believe it is with the questions on it. If you don't have one, can you let us know and we'll make sure that you get one? Just so we can, uh, think of the process. Thank you. Otherwise, I'm gonna elevate the music. That doesn't make any sense. Yeah, my kitchen. Oh, good for you.
I, I'm reserved, so. And I should, um, say, I am on the, I don't know, the South, uh, South here. I'm actually the chair.
Forty-three.
So, uh, and, uh. Mostly what I'm, uh, most, so I. That's, that way. We especially.
I, I had chickens here. I had chickens for years and we'd go in the front yard and we'd see chickens running.
Definitely, it's not a good place.
Yeah, no, South Park is a farmer's new.
It has to be three, it's like, uh, probably something like.
It's definitely, yeah, it's a farmer's.
You know, in my place, like, I'm, I'm pregnant, actually. With a problem.
I'm on.
That's, I know that's presidential. It used to be South Park, it was a college.
Well, there's a problem with farming. There's a problem with farming, um, they don't, they don't, they don't. And so if you sell anything on land and you don't sell that in town, they also, that's, um, they, uh, send you. But that, that's, that's.
Even though it's the way it's not as easy as it is.
So that one wasn't.
No, 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 no.
I left me the, um, Lindon lady.
Oh, um.
So, the town.
No.
Somebody. Then you've got the, uh, water rail right there. You know, so.
The penny.
They have a lot of planes, but no business. And half mile from there, also, that house.
Well, did you write it up?
Where is that in relationship to, uh? Some march?
I just wanna say, this is all the farmer. Is maybe true.
I know I did that. I'm, I'm amazed at how much, you know. I know it's protected. Okay, so they just sell them by the watch.
That's his biggest, uh, ripple to laugh.
Courtesy of the, um, Massachusetts, uh, the city of Boston, inspired to take this, you know, land from South Park.
You writing off?
What, uh, what might that say? Concerned. And that's, I will.
I'd say that people, that people who didn't come to have input would comply.
I don't, my dad said, he said, I, I showed him a concept of part of.
Oh, that's a good point, yeah. I know, cause a lot, a lot of property isn't loaded, they're going to have to call. We got pretty small house and we had this, uh, system of thirty thousand dollars.
Well, our, the people who built my house on Highlands were crazy. They built, um, it's a two bedroomed place. I would sell five, uh, and eleven.
Then we're ahead of the game.
So, so when I put my garage on, I said, I'm gonna roll over that.
Make it out, oh, it's gonna be great, great, great. Our house is tomorrow. But it doesn't mean that.
Here, uh, in, uh, Marcus, uh, twenty-one. I can imagine all the trouble that we had.
I attached one day, I was almost so.
I've heard. I thought you looked familiar. You also look familiar, but. No?
I come here a lot.
Well, I do, I come on Fridays.
You're in the Dalvenham.
Yeah.
You're the only one on.
Yeah, so. Sorry. Well, it was funny because, you know, I guess the actual land of Westford is back in February. But we built it, um, nothing was done yet at that point. And then I guess, like, something came up. Should we do something? We see the end of the year. Well, I, I just started, uh, over a year ago. And, uh, shortly after I joined American Sent Out, um, a whole list of members. And forty-seven days. But since that time. And forty-seven days on, but since that time, there must have been twelve, fifteen new members that joined up. Now, uh, not all, I don't know, some more, you know. Well, we've got a little bit of a history. I guess Pembroke was the first place. It's not really our, I mean, Bill was chairman of the, uh, Asian community. And he and one other guy went out to town, Pembroke, worried about what they've done. And then, you know, we just started. And now there are several others. Yeah, well, I think we have forty of them in West Row. Well, you know, I've always been part of it, you know, as they said, for a year, for five years. Bill has a way, you know, he leads things, tricks things, but it's done in kind of a laid-back way. Jokes about maybe adults in charge.
Well, he does, says bingo night. Yeah, sorry, and I, I complained to him. So I complained to him because bingo tells jokes and most people go bingo. This joke was similar about older women. I said, "You shouldn't be telling older women jokes about making fun of older women. Change it and say, 'Yeah.'" He was very despondent.
What can I say?
I do.
I think he's basically a good guy, but, but, but we sometimes betray our...
My son, his son, friends in high school.
I wouldn't, but it's a friend of him, but it's still, oh, yeah. Yeah, but, but he has a friend of him connection, I think. But maybe he's gone by high school.
I know that his son was like a year older than my son and they were open halls, a prison, and, and, uh, El Longwood.
Yeah, he's, he's, I know he lives, uh, he lives on, uh, which, but, um, but I mean, I, I, I'm under the impression that he grew up in...
Abuse of group and family, because I knew him a long time ago. Because he's kind of all abusive and more here.
Yeah. Well, he got this guy to come and do the, uh, it's, it's with that article on my, my South Row. This Glenn Solomon, he creates, he made musical instruments and then plays drums. And it disperses it with humor. Which really, it's now a long show. Yeah, well, this guy's been doing this since nineteen eighty-three. I have never, I haven't been around. I actually, I was born and, and began my life in Worcester. Uh, then my parents bought a tiny little house in Leicester where I lived until I went off on my own. To me, uh, growing up, uh, sort of on the, you know, west of here. South Row is a town you went through once in a while, right to Boston, you know, before the fight was... Didn't have much other... Well, when I, at some point, I realized the same office, you realize that it's really, it's got an interest in your street.
Well, and the school is so... You know, once, every time I went to, uh, they had the seniors and then we'd play school. Where we had to go and have lunch with the kids over at the school. Right, his family's been a time, they hate Tom Brady. Mostly kids, you know, Asian kids, and they all hated Tom Brady.
You're good.
Oh, as I say, I thought you looked friendly. Quit talking.
See you around.
Why did you select the location of the meeting?
It doesn't matter. If they bought ten, I can, these are coming, and then I'll tear this down and then you'll... It's beautiful, which is the town of...
Any other reference to some of those? Uh, you know, so, you know, so...
You're not still, look.
They, they'll have enough.
If I sit too long, then I have to... It's an exercise. I, I figured you probably weren't recording at this point, but, but I went to an event at Harvard, uh, some months ago, and, uh, they were recording it. And it was in this kind of wraparound, you know, small auditorium. And by the end of, I forgot that they were... And, uh, the program was almost over, but my daughter was waiting, she had come to pick me up. And I had texted her, and I said, "Well," I, I, I delayed a little bit because I was trying to get to the end of the program, but then they kept going on. So they said, "I better get out there, I don't want to, you know, wait any longer." And, uh, I just got up with my, put on my jacket and, and walked along. And then I realized, I made a cameo there. Sorry? Well, I watched the, uh, select board meeting. And, uh, I, I started zooming it and there was no picture. And apparently they're having some problems with that right now, the zoom. I switched over to, uh, to the television, the cable and all that. But they, I mean, I guess they at some point mentioned that it was a problem and they're working on it. Okay, I'm John. Nice to meet you. This is great stuff because it's hard, especially you're getting along in years to, to go to all these meetings. It's a way to stay in touch without, uh, leaving it home.
No. Hello, I'm Edie. Are you new? Oh, awesome, welcome back.
And he put the stickers right on his property, said, "I want mine, I want it on your shoulder."
You've got a cute little guy running around there.
Would it revitalize minds? Oh, yeah.
I, uh, when I was growing up, I babysat someone.
Oh, really?
It was an apartment.
These were always apartments.
See, that's amazing to, oh, I mean, that, that was...
Just dilapidated, right?
All right, you too.
So that's why we're looking at you. See, that's why we're looking at you. This, this goes to, uh...
Oak Hills down at the mobile? Oh, yeah, we're like, oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's it.
So what if there's a, is there preservation section or any, like, what about that?
Um, well, the house was on, on Ludner, on Central Street and Ludner.
I knew a guy who was a car conductor, you wouldn't know, he was a car conductor. And, uh, he was totally at the door and he was tearing down the house. And he said, "Can you give me till Monday?" I said, "You know, like, I would like this." And he started, and he told me what he had to do, like, like label, number, every beat. And his house was beautiful.
Oh, oh.
They just took down that giant tree. It's forty-eight or six inches, I think it's forty-eight. I don't know, Marnie took a picture that day. Um, I, I think, I don't know, it was big. We have this thing about, like, taking down the big trees. Was it oak? I don't know what kind.